And just put on prop and I'll shut them from this.
And this is going, Mr. This one?
Yep.
She pushed forward.
Okay.
A little bit today.
You're good to go.
Yeah. I'll call the meeting to order.
Thank you, I do.
And we're going to start by introducing the board members. Ian McCellar, the chair.
Bill Myers, planning board member.
I'm Stigie Baran, alternate. Betsy Hatch, planning board member.
Shaw Taster, planning board member.
Michael McQuaid, secretary.
Dakota Castor, planning board alternate.
First item is to review the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion for a review? All in favor? I mean, I like. Uh, the next item is, uh, we allow time for public comment. Uh, if anybody has anything to say, we ask that you limit your comments for two minutes. Uh, and introduce yourself and in what capacity you're here of it speaking. If nobody has anything to say, then we'll move on. Uh, the next item was approval of our October meeting mats. We don't have those available yet, so that's going to happen table. And the next item is town supervisor, Mary Ann Ashley is going to give us a brief discussion on the, on the Canton's comprehensive plans.
Okay. May I join the table, Mr. Chairman? May I sit at the table?
Yeah, sure. At the candidate's table.
Hi, everybody. How are you? So this is our comprehensive plan. That's all I have to say. Um, I just, um, we are contracting with, um, MJ Engineering to do an update of our comprehensive, a review, then update of our comprehensive plan. Um, this plan, and I'm thinking we all know about it, but sometimes plans just sit on the shelf and, um, you know, I, our boards, uh, feel that we need to review it and make any changes, make suggestions. Um, we will, that one, this is the, this was adopted in October of 2019. That was a long time ago and a lot has changed with our town, right? But this was a three municipality, three municipalities worked together. Um, there was a state grant that we received and this was the vision at the time of where our town is and where we should be going. And so there's a lot in here and I would encourage you, if you haven't, uh, had a look at it in a while, it is online. But if you would like a copy, we can, uh, do our best to get you a copy as well. Um, but we the village, um, of Canton and our board, we are determined to keep this right up, right up front, right? Instead of keeping it on a shelf. Um, there was a lot of work that was, um, put into this with the three municipalities. Ressler Falls was also part of it. They have chosen not to do the update with us. And that's fine, but we are moving forward. There is a meeting that at the end of the month, um, I sent Ian, um, an email about it and, um, invited you or someone from the planning board to join us for the, um, for the engineer to, to listen and give us any input. Because a lot has changed since 2019 in our town. Solar being one of them, right? Um.
And we had, at least a couple of, of listed.
You were going to that, John?
Okay, great, great. And you know, it was part of the, um, com- comprehensive plan, um, to update our zoning law. And so we've been working on that for a few years, right? Uh, COVID did interfere with the progress of that. Um, we're back to the table trying to move it forward. Um, a lot, a lot more again, things have changed. So, um, you know, we're trying to get, get through that journey as well. But I just, um, you know, I felt compelled to, to share this with the planning board to say, okay, this is what we're doing. And this was our vision then. And, um, you know, we need your input. Again, it won't be a lengthy, uh, process. Um, we are paying the consultants to do this, but it's probably only going to be like four meetings. Some might be on Zoom, but we are definitely having two in person. So, um, you know, this is a, um, I'm pretty proud of this document, but it is, it is a lot. And the, the amount of time that everybody put into this. It was a lot, wasn't it? Yeah. So, um, that's all I wanted to say. I know you have a lengthy agenda. And you know, if you ever had any questions, just let me know. Okay?
Thank you, yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time and thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Our next item, Kathy Shreve with the Canton Sustainability Group.
Hello. I put a share screen.
Here's my, yeah.
And then I click on that. Oh, oh, no. I can need to do it again. Maybe stop share, okay. Um, click on that. And then say share. In a second. Uh huh. I'm gonna have to show. I'm showing. Yeah, it should be up on your screen though. Let's try it again. One. Oh, here. Alright, okay. Okay, so I guess I'll just start talking. Um, so I'm the chair of the Canton Sustainability Committee and I wanted to share with you, um, some information about this workshop that happened back in March. This was a workshop that was funded by the National Science Foundation. It was free. Um, and various folks from Canton and Potsdam attended. Mary Ann was there. You were there for a little bit. And, um, uh, I wanted to share, we wanted to share this because we think that there are some tools that came out of this workshop. It was very, very practical. Um, that would be very useful for planning boards. Uh, Mary Ann has already heard this. She thought it was, you know, helpful to know for, um, municipalities for planning and in particular, because, um, you have so much on your plates. And as Mary Ann pointed out, like so 10 years ago, you didn't have to deal with figuring out all this solar stuff and you know, those applications. And all of that is being driven by climate change. And so being able to not have to invent the wheel and have like tools that you can actually apply to help us think through, okay, what do we have to do? What do we have to be thinking about? What questions are we going to be asking? How do we plan? How do we deal with zoning? Um, in the, the face of the impact of climate change. So if I can have the next slide, please. Um. Maybe.
What was in it for?
Oh, okay.
It's showing on the computer, but not on here.
Yeah, it's showing on the computer. I use a Mac. Do you know how to use these?
I know how to use mine.
Do you want to have a look? I'm not sure. It doesn't work the same way.
It's appears that way. Oops, did I do that?
Sorry about the delay.
It's not switching.
Can we just click on the slide, maybe?
Yeah, that seems like. I need to close that frame here.
Where's the mouse go?
There you go.
Oh.
Oh, okay. I don't know what we did. So, but anyway, I'm not gonna belabor the whole climate thing, but we all know that there is climate change. Now, this was the hottest summer on record. We're not Death Valley, but we had a lot of hot days. Not very far away in Mount Pilgrim, Vermont, they had record flooding. And so these are just things that, you know, we're gonna ha- we're gonna have to deal with. We're already dealing with it. It's already the wettest fall on record as well. So, next slide.
It's already raining cities by there. Potential to be okay at the climate change.
Yeah. And one of the things that Kent needs to think about is that, um, already we're getting climate refugees. Not people who are running away from hurricanes necessarily, but people who don't want to live in Florida anymore because their land is going to be underwater. Um, so what did we do to make that go?
Oh, question on the climate refugee.
Yeah.
Any sort of number to support that?
No, that right now it's just, um, anecdotal, like people, you know, I've been in a room and said, how many people have just moved here because of the climate? And you get several people raising their hands, but that's something that I think we need to be aware of and think about.
Sure.
Um, that you can promote.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
CM comes through the Potsdam farm market.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's significant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So what?
In a, in a town of, say, 10,000 people.
Yeah.
How many new residents do you think over the last year?
That's to pin down a number. I can't tell you, but it's noticeable.
Well, I think more people are moving this area because of pricing.
She's right. We have free water.
I don't know how to answer it.
I would say state or county.
We're gonna click on the slide.
Population decline.
Okay, here we go.
One thirty.
Nope, did not work.
Yeah, that worked, but not.
On there. Oh, goodness. I don't want to spend forever doing that. I did click on the slide. Help me out, somebody.
I can.
You can't. You are sharing, but I don't know how to make it advance on his. I did. Peached out.
We'll paint us a picture.
Oh, man. Okay, well, let's just do that. Um.
Turn it around.
You guys can, well, you know, whatever. Okay. I'll look at it and just do my best. So, um, the, the basic changes, and you probably already know this already, is that it's going to get wetter and it's going to get hotter. Um, and, um, in terms of annual temperature, and this is all data that, you know, is from a lot of reputable sources. Um, I'm gonna provide you with the final report from this workshop. It was a three-day workshop. Um, and there are lots and lots of links to it and all of the tools are available. It's all public, um, publicly available. So, um, I'll provide, I'll give the link to you and anybody can look at the report and, you know, get to the tools and things like that. So anyway, um, we're looking at for, um, by the 2050s, an annual temperature increase of almost five and a half degrees, which is actually quite a lot. And by the 2090s, even more, um, ten, ten and a half degrees. Um, and there are going to be more, more extreme heat and days over 90 degrees, um, by the 2050s will have more, almost 12 days over 90 degrees. And if we want to go all the way into the 2090s, none of us are going to be here, but our grandchildren are um, and children, then we're looking at 40 days, 41 days over 90. So what does this mean? I mean, this, you know, just to think in terms of planning, when I moved here almost 40 years ago, we, I never thought about air conditioning. I finally got a little one last year for my bedroom, but you know, like, we never thought about that kind of stuff, but we're all like, if you're going to build a building or, or anything, we're going to have to start thinking about things like air conditioning and, you know, all of the, all these things that we never really concerned, were concerned about. Um, and in terms of, oh, how did we do that? Oh. Okay, rainfall, you know, we're talking about, um, a 6% change increase in rainfall by the 2050s. So again, things like storm sewers or, you know, issues like in Furling, in Mount Pilgrim, Vermont, where we need, or anybody who has, um, waterfront property, lakes or rivers. I, I'm gonna have to be thinking about these things. So we're gonna have to, you know, be, have this on our, um, yeah, you got it. Um, and it's gonna be more extreme. We know that too. So more rainfall, but more extreme storms. So we're gonna have less snowfall, but it's gonna be more like ice and things like that. It's just so charming. Um, okay, next slide. Um, and also it sounds contradictory, but there's also an increased risk of seasonal drought. So that's also going to impact our farmers too. So like although we may overall have more rainfall, there may be periods of time, like maybe right at the end of the summer or other times when, you know, there's a drought. Okay, next slide. All right. So anyway, this, I keep looking at that. This, this workshop, um, was not about mitigation. Mitigation of climate changes, how do you reduce it? Which is by using more renewables and, you know, reducing greenhouse gas emission. This was all about adaptation. Cause it's coming, it's already here. So how do we adapt? What do we do with it? About it? What do planning boards, what do, you know, municipal governments? How do, how do we deal with this? It's, it is overwhelming. You know, and, and we all have so much on our plates. We just, it's hard to even think about what to do. All right. So next slide, please. Um, so one of the tools that they gave us was a tool called the Rapid Vulnerability and Adaptation Tool. This one is not, um, a tool necessarily for a planning board. Um, although it would be useful to look at, it's more of what maybe a town government, you know, the boards could look at, for example, because this is a tool, and if we go to the next slide, where, um, again, this is where a visual would be helpful, but there's a matrix. And so you pick a, a climate impact like increased rainfall. And then it, you, the tool allows you to step through how that climate impact like increased rainfall will impact agriculture or impact housing or impact infrastructure. And there are a whole bunch of sort of questions and, um, you know, you, you, it's a matrix. So you decide, is this a high risk, low risk? And you can choose what your timeframe is. So you can choose what do you want to look at? Five years down the road or 20 years down the road, you know? Um, and so it's just something that's already been created. So we don't have to sit there and go, how do, how do we even think about this? You know, and you can start applying this. We actually went through this assessment, um, at the workshop. There were three different groups and we divided into those groups, all the participants. And one of them was agriculture, another one was housing. I think the other one was infrastructure, but.
Infrastructure and one was, uh,
It was food and agriculture, yeah. And so we, we went through this process. And so all of that, um, information is actually in the report. So if, you know, it was a, it was a fairly long process of thinking about, okay, what are all the risks? I was in the agriculture group. So what are all the risks, um, associated with climate change, you know, increased rainfall, possibilities of drought, heat, um, different insects coming in because of, you know, the different climate. Um, some of it's not bad. Some of it's actually good. What crops can we now grow that we couldn't grow before? For example, um, but then also thinking about, okay, but how does that impact other things like, um, areas, what do we do with farmland? You know, are we losing farmland to other uses? Um, and do we need to be thinking ahead because people will be moving into this area to farm because they can't farm out west because there's no water there anymore? You know, things like that. And so there are a lot of things to think about, but this helps you think about and it asks the questions of what should we be thinking about and what, what level of risking? Is it high? Is it moderate? Or is it something that we really don't have to worry about 10 years down the road, but maybe 50 years down the road, we can choose? Um, yeah, okay. So thi- this is, we can go on. Um, okay, the second tool that was really useful, and this is the one that's really much even more applicable to planning boards, I think, is it, it was called the Climate Change Adaptation Certification Tool. Um, and what that is, is it's kind of like a seeker for those of you who are familiar with seekers. Again, it's like a, a checklist that you can go through, um, that assess for any kind of a project. Um, and this could be a building project. It could be, um, you know, like a, a solar project. It could be, um, anything. Um, and it, again, provides a whole lot of questions that you ask in relationship to climate change. And again, without visuals, it's a little hard to show you how that works, but it, but you know, the questions are already there. It's not that you can't generate other ones, but you know, there, a lot of things have already been thought through, so you don't have to do it. And then you can just sort of say, okay, yeah. You know, this is how this might apply. This is how that might apply. And, and then, um, any, it's, it's a good exercise to go through for any project so that you can say, okay, so, um, how, how will climate change impact this project 10 years down the road? So that we don't make decisions now that we regret later because we didn't think about, you know, climate change. Um, yeah, so this, uh, let's see if there's anything here. Yeah, the, this, this was just a visual of what it looked like, but it had, for example, precipitation and then there was a checklist, this project or um, access to it. And then there are questions and says it involves this, involves that, it involves that. And you just check. You know, and then depending on how many little check marks you have, you can sort of assess the risks and the sorts of things that you need to be thinking about going forward. Um, and yeah, we'll leave it there. That, so.
That's a major.
Yeah, that was, that, uh, the third tool that they gave us was like, um, a map of all different agencies and organizations um, in the Canton-Potsdam area to help with figuring out who are allies. This is more, this would be more applicable if you're trying to, um, look for grant funding and you know, you're looking for partners who could do this or, you know, um, who, who might, who might be someone who would spearhead some of the agricultural changes or, you know, applications for now property of extension, for example, things like that. Anyway, so. And how, yes, exactly. This isn't, you can't see that either, but it's a whole map with connections and things like that. And it's interactive, more and more can be added. So it's just, again, it's like not reinventing the wheel. We all know these organizations are there, but this gave you a visual of, oh, that's that, that's that. And oh, they're connected in this way. So. Anyway, so to summarize, sorry about not having the visuals. Um, there are these tools and particularly the, the, um, one that I was talking about with, which is kind of like the seeker. I think this would be really useful for planning boards to use. And they're really easy to use. Like we stepped through them in the three-day workshop. Um, and, and there is a lot of data already there in, in our practice runs too, for the, uh, the, um, first truly RVAT tool. Um, and the other thing I, we are aware of is that, you know, it's great to say, oh yeah, there's these tools and I know everybody's really busy and to get around to even looking at them. So at some future date, we'd love to set up a time where we could just step, really just step people through. So you can see the visual and say, okay, this is how you do it. It won't take that long and, you know, could be really, really helpful for planning because it's here and it's coming and we have to plan for it.
You can send this PDF of your.
Yeah, um, we could download it on the.
This is not my computer. I'm not. I'm not downloading it, guys.
I can, I can send you a link to the whole report. Um, and I, yeah, I can probably figure out a way.
PowerPoint and save it as a PDF.
The whole, oh, the whole PowerPoint, yeah.
It'll save as a smaller enough file.
Yeah, I can do that. All of the slides.
Good. The, the thing with this, the only thing I was, it was supposed to be held at Clarkson University. It was supposed to be at the university where you could be in a group, talking back and forth, but unfortunately, COVID, we had to do it via Zoom. So that, that to me, you know, you're, you're in a group chat type thing, but I would have rather been face to face with people and talking about, I, I think I was on the farm, farm and food one. I don't know how I got stuck on that one, but I was. That was the only thing, but it was, it was very informative.
So, yeah, I can send it. All of the slides here are part of the report.
If you send it to the board email.
Okay.
Which I get. Then I put it out to everybody so that.
Yeah, I can do that. And, and the report has, actually the report has all of this.
Then it, then you can be in touch with me and we'll try and figure out
Okay.
a time slot to, to do the follow-up.
There we go.
Um, do you have any idea how, how much time would be involved?
It kind of depends on how, how much you want. Like how detailed you want to go. I think, I think, in my opinion, I think that second tool that I talked about, the one that's like the seeker is probably the most important for you guys. The other one is good to do, but it's more for like, you know, Mary Ann.
Half an hour, an hour?
You know what? Why, why not just start with a half an hour? And, you know, if you feel like that's not enough, we could do some, you know, follow-up map.
Okay. Then we, so we can be in touch and
Okay.
in the next two, three months, if we have a meeting that's not.
Fill with a million things, yeah. Which is the problem, right? There's just so much to do. So this is all about trying to make it easier.
For the upcoming comprehensive plan meetings, our members of this is the Sustainability Committee, they're going to be.
We haven't been.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, we should collectively reach out to Supervisor Ashley to get some representation there.
Any other questions?
Do you want to do that contact directly with Mary Ann?
Um, yeah, probably. Don't let me forget.
You can take it.
I can take it.
You can take it now, man.
Right. I usually walk off without them.
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need a break before we dive into the next step or we get to go? We need Eric. We need Eric's, on Eric's. Eric is on there.
Yes. I'm good.
You might be if we're doing the settings and.
I'm sorry, I heard my name.
Oh, yeah, we're just, we're just confirming that you're out there.
Yes, in between yelling at kids, I'm here.
Eric Barr is one of our voting, uh, planning board members. Um, so he'll be discussing this via Zoom tonight. And I have, uh, Kibbling from Barton La Judas on and William Buchanan are, uh, solar attorney as well. And that is it.
Then, next step is to, uh, address the secret part two of the, um, project on Jay's farm. Hoping everybody got a chance to look at this. And our usual rule is to go through it all.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Um, number one for the, uh, is the impact on land and the proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. And the answer was yes. And A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to the water table is less than three feet. And it's checked, moderate to large impact may occur. Um. B, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. There's no impact. C, the proposed action may have involved construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the existing ground surface and that's no impact. D, the proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than a thousand tons of natural material. There's no impact. E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. There's no impact. F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicides. And it's labeled as a small impact. G, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area and with no impact. Um, I have the, uh, report from. Our engineers. Does anybody have any comments on this part? The uh, the one comment on on the engineering report is that the average depth to the water table is about one foot.
It's pretty wide down.
Yeah, below the ground surface. Number two is the impact on geological features. And the proposed proposed it, action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Example cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves. And the answer was no. Number three, the impact on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Example streams, rivers, ponds or lakes. The answer is yes. A, the proposed action may create a new water body. No impact. B, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more. Then a 10 acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water. There's no impact. C, the proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. There's no impact. D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland. Or in the better banks of any other water body. And it's labeled as a small impact. E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body. Either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments. And it's labeled as a small impact. F, the proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water may impact. G, the proposed action may include construction, one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water. And there's no impact. H, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation. Or other degradation of receiving water bodies. And that's a small impact. I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. And that's a small impact. J, the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. There's no impact. K, the proposed action may require the construction of new or expanding, expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. And there's no impact. And. Does anybody have comments on that? We've got um. This, the engineering report. There is a small officially designated wetland on the, on the property.
Is that what the small impact is?
Some of it and uh, also the the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body. And the engineering report says that ground disturbances associated with proposed infrastructure may result in increased upland erosion. The SWIP prepared by Colliers Engineering, details necessary erosion control measures for the project. And erosion and sediment controls are shown on the site plans. All erosion and sediment control measures will be followed during construction to prevent erosion-related turbidity. Increases to on and off-site wetlands and surface water. And additionally, the applicant was through New York State DMC. GP 020 001 coverage prior to construction. And uh, that was specifically for 3E. But the same answer also applies to H and I that were labeled small impacts.
Remember that wetland piece is a little bit small.
Yes.
It's not planted across that.
Any discussion on that section? Number four is the impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional reuse of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer. The answer was no. Number five, the impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. And the answer was yes. A, the proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway, no impact. B, the proposed action may result in development within 100-year floodplain, no impact. C, the proposed action may result in development within a 500-year floodplain, no impact. D, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns, a small impact. E, the proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding, no impact. F, if there is a dam located on the site with the proposed action, is the dam in need of repair or upgrade, no impact.
We had a question on this one.
Sure.
Evan's probably right.
Yeah.
You guys did, you guys did the SWIP.
Yeah.
I'm wondering how, in your previous work, have you seen with a uh, collection like this and I guess with larger arrays? Heavy rainfall hitting panels then to the ground. As as things would grow, would you, would it be safest of us to say that risk would grow in terms of flooding as well? In terms of that water, not not maybe for this site because it will be small, but as sites grow, we have a larger. Out for the village and I just wanted your, your thought.
The DC has guidance on how to construct these solar systems. And the, the key thing is you're with a panel, so let's say your panel is 10 feet wide. The row in between the panels has to be greater than that. So if your panel is 10 feet wide and your row is nine feet wide, that's a problem. They consider it a roof. And that's the way, then you have to do a lot more work. Most of these applications, they avoid that by creating uh, the width, the row is greater than um. With the panel exactly. And then if there's certain slopes, if it's less than 5%, it's usually not an issue. But if there's more than 5%, then you do level spreader sprays spaced out, which for part of this project, we have some level spreaders along the contours. So combination of a couple of things.
Is that to the spacing to allow enough surface area, the ground to absorb the water?
Yeah, a little bit of that allows time to, for the war of infiltrates just. They have uh, in the, in the DC Blue Book, they have uh, um. Their spacing requirements based on the slope. So if you have a really steep slope, your level spreaders have to be really close together. But if you have something that's more gentle, you space them out far enough. Um, to just kind of capture that water, slow it down, get infiltrates and goes on.
Okay. Any other discussion on this section?
Well, this was going to be a modification of existing drainage animals.
D, let's see. Oh, here, here, here's the comments from the engineers. The proposed concrete invoated pads and impervious access drive will generate 1.49 acres of new impervious area on the project site. Which will contribute a small amount of additional sheet flow runoff. Temporary ground disturbances will also result from the installation of the security fencing, solar panel array, utility poles. And permanent stormwater manu- management features. The SWIP developed by Colliers will be followed during construction to minimize stormwater runoff. The SWIP addresses the operation and maintenance of temporary and permanent stormwater control. Measures for the project. Stormwater runoff will be directed to dry swales and grass filter strips that will be constructed as part of the project. Impact to surrounding properties from changes to existing drainage patterns are not expected to be significant.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay. And that's section number six is impact on air. The proposed action may include a state regulated, state regulated air emission source. And the answer is no. Number seven, the impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. And the answer is yes. A, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species. As listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. And that's no impact. B, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare. Threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. Small impact. C, the proposed action may result in, may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals. Of any species of special concern or conservation need. As listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. It's listed as no impact. D, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat. Used by any species of special concern and conservation need. As listed by New York State or the federal government. Listed at no impact. E. The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national, national natural landmark to support biological community. It was established to protect, no impact. F, the proposed action may result in the removal of or grounded disturbance in. Any portion of a designated significant natural community, no impact. G, the proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting. Foraging or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site. Small impact. H, the proposed action requires the conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. No impact. The proposed action involves use of herbicides or pesticides, no impact.
Something like the butterfly.
Yeah, there's the comments from, from the engineers. The proposed act, this is pertaining to seven B. The proposed action is likely to add a small impact on the local flora and fauna. All efforts will be made to reduce or eliminate the impact by limiting clearing. Following all federal and state guidelines related to ecological impact and review processes. The US Forest and Wildlife Service, since the May 12th planning and consultation system indicated that the project site is within the range of one species. The monarch butterfly. The monarch butterfly is currently a candidate for listing under the Endangered Species Act. The project site currently contains agricultural fields that may support the monarch butterfly. After construction, the inside of the solar ray will be seeded with a pollinator seed mix. And a verbaceous cover will persist. No adverse impacts to monarch butterfly or habitat are anticipated to result from the project. In April 2023, the northern long-eared bat was uplisted from threatened to endangered. Since the IPAC was submitted in March 23, the applicant should resubmit to the US Forest and Wildlife Service. To confirm if there have been changes to the determination at the site. Additional measures in accordance with the US Forest and Wildlife Service guidance. May be required during construction, for example, timing restrictions pending the updated results. The New York D, State D C Environmental Resource Mapper. Did not report any state listed threat under endangered species for the project site. And part G that was listed as a small impact, the comments. Are common species that use the project site likely will include the whitetail deer, gray squirrel, eastern cotton tail, raccoon, various bird species. And the eastern chipmunk. The project will convert 51.94 acres of active agricultural land through a non-agricultural use. The most significant habitat impacts would be associated with tree clearing, which could impact habitat for multiple species. 0.16 acres of tree removal is proposed for the project. Tree clearing will be completed in localized areas throughout the site. All temporarily disturbed areas will be stabilized and reseeded. Naturalized pollinator seed mix will be planted throughout the solar array to maintain herbaceous cover. Wetlands, wetland areas will be reseeded with a native wetland meadow seed mix. Project is unlikely to result in significant habitat impacts. Or disruptions to wildlife nesting, breeding, and or foraging activities. Are there comments on this? How often do you intend to mow?
Mowing, um, well, the first.
Yeah, I can, uh, the first year or two is um, a little un. Not the typical after the first year or two, because at that time, we're seeing what's, how well the seed is taking. And then um, there's two different routes that we go for these, these projects as outlined in the operations and maintenance plan. On solar grazing with sheep, it's becoming more and more popular and we're, we're leaving that effort. Um, on our community solar barns, so we'll either do uh, solar grazing, which obviously is a little bit different schedule than that of mowing. Um, mowing would be typically two to three times per year.
From an environmental standpoint, you could consider mowing once in the fall. Because that.
When the birds can nest.
The birds can nest, the monarchs have come, the turtles are happy and, and they have the monarchs have eaten the milk, we eat the lab. That saves you guys money besides.
Yeah, so what you said in the fall?
Yes. Because your goal is to keep stuff from getting too big to interfere with the panels.
Right.
And, and once a year, mowing will do that.
I, I believe that um, certain mixes, grass mix doesn't get as high. So sometimes we use a mix that only gets like 18.4 inches high.
You're going to get golden red.
But nature, nature is going to seed it.
Right.
There's a lot of seed in the soil already.
Yeah. Whatever you plant, five, 10 years from now, it's going to be real different.
The same thing that's going to happen.
Yeah.
So that's, once a year, I feel like with other projects, sorry. We, another project, have we suggested that in their operation in the spring, for once a year versus?
We suggested it.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, cool.
Thank you. I remember that one time that you, you made a comment like that and I was like, hmm, okay.
Cool, okay.
That must be a reason why some of them aren't moved. They just.
It's, it's better for the environment.
It is, yeah.
It's interesting that the hawks that were across the street were Joel. When they counted in the.
Yeah.
I'm sure they fly across the road.
Right.
But I never actually noticed any down there.
I wondered about that myself. Um. We're up to eight, the impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. The answer is yes. A, the proposed action may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State Land Classification System. And it's labeled a small impact. B, the proposed action may sever, cross, or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. It includes cropland, hayfields, pasture, vineyard, orchard, etc. A small impact. C, the proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of the soil profile of act, active agricultural. C, the proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of the soil profile of ac- active agricultural land. Small impact. D, the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses. Either more than two and a half acres if located in an agricultural district. Or more than ten acres if not within an agricultural district. And it's labeled a moderate to large impact. E, the proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system. Small impact. F, the proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. Small impact. And G, the proposed project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan. It's no impact. Is there any discussion on this section? I've got.
Somewhere I saw that there's sentences of some different soil types.
Says that forty-four acres were prime, forty-four acres.
I've got the, it's all in the report from the, uh, prime drain. The engineers.
What's the three point, three point four were statewide, there were, that was the soil of statewide significance. I don't remember what that means. Somebody tell me what that means.
The three point four acres?
Yeah. What's it mean statewide?
It's prime, prime agricultural land.
Forty-four that are labeled as prime. Forty-four that are prime farmland if drained and three point four acres of farmland of statewide importance.
Right, with the way they classify the soils, prime, prime of drain, and then the soil of statewide significance. Not sure if there's anything below that.
Yeah. It's one through eight. Two, three, four, four A, four B, five A, five B, six, seven, and eight. Types of land. Eight being like swamp.
So in our regs, we don't give, even in the comp plan, there's no mention of, you know, soils of statewide significance, however, prime farm obviously is.
Yes, yes.
And, I mean, like Sandy Mown. What, and one of. Like, oh, the Sandy Mown, I think, right? And it was. Not very high percentage, but it was not both half between the west and east.
No. I can read the, uh. I can, uh. Chalk from the engineers on this, um.
What about B?
On D.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, they, they gave an extensive answer of A. And those same answers. Applied for B, C, D.
They're saying the proposed action may irreversibly convert. From soon, so it's gonna be the pads, right? Because the rest of it is. The whole thing is. To not disturb or to not remove from the land or to not.
Yeah. I'll read what they, what, uh. Yeah. According to the USDA. N R C S web soil survey, there are multiple map soil units classified as prime farmland or farmland of state importance. Within the project site. These designations are comparable to New York State Land Classification System Soil Group. One through four designations. There are forty-four plus eight or minus acres of far- prime farmland. Forty-four point two acres of prime farmland if drained. And three point four acres of farmland of statewide importance within the project site. Project site is located in Saint Lawrence County Agricultural District number two. And has been actively farmed. Solar projects that are funded by NYSERDA or the New York Sun Commercial and Industrial Program. Are required to submit a notice of intent. To the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets. And the notice of intent is in progress to obtain NYSERDA funding. If NYSERDA funding is awarded in the future. Coordination with the New York State. Department of Ag and Markets will be completed. Regardless of the notice of intent. Requirement, the project will be constructed in accordance with New York State. Department of Ag and Markets Guidelines for Agricultural Mitigation for Solar Energy Projects. The project will result in the conversion of fifty-one point nine four acres of agricultural land to a non-agricultural use. The project will be constructed in accordance with the New York State Department of Ag and Markets Construction Standards. Soils classified as prime farmland will not be removed from the site. Agricultural impacts will be considered by the Saint Lawrence County. I D A when they negotiate payment in lieu of tax taxes. Agreement with the applicant. And by the town of Canton when they negotiate a host community agreement. The anticipated loss of agricultural land is not expected to constitute a significant impact as there are approximately. Six hundred and fifteen thousand acres of farmland in ag districts in Saint Lawrence County. Which will not be impacted by the project. The applicant has a lease agreement in place with the landowner. Which became effective in September of twenty-three. The property owner may continue to farm other portions of their property that are outside of the project's limits of disturbance. In addition, the site will be restored to its pre-development conditions after the solar array is decommissioned. Anticipated to be twenty-five years. And may be used for agricultural purposes again at that time. And basically that same response applied for all of these. Um. Sections.
So could you say that the, uh, west, the west, uh, segment is more primed than the east segment? Could you say that?
Yes.
West segment. Is about the best farmland of any of the projects that we've dealt with. Since, uh. The start of the solar challenges.
I don't, I don't agree with that. So we prepared a map. Prime farmland. Almost drawn. And the west project. Uh, is mostly prime farmland if drained.
If I, if I may, I believe Ian's comment was regarding other projects, so.
Yeah.
I think that his statement is, is accurate.
Wait a minute, what's, now what's, what's?
Referring to the other. Other solar projects and.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding, sorry.
No, but I think the point about prime if drained. Is, is always an issue because the bottom line is to drain farmland is expensive. And it oftentimes, even though primed, they don't do it because it is not. Comfortable, it is not. Expending.
Is one section filed or no? No, no.
Yeah, but there's forty-four acres that are primed. And there's forty-four acres that are primed to drain, so I'm asking, is the west side? More primed than east side?
Oh, that's what I'm saying, that's what I was answering.
Yeah.
The west is not. The most of the west is prime farmland if drained.
Then where's the prime farmland that's not drained?
Prime farmland that's not drained is on east.
And, uh, this would be included in, um, the plan set for a little of the law, there's soil now required for the site. Um.
Helps it all, but. I have a big.
Do you have a big one?
I do have a big one.
Right.
Yeah, we get to get a visual on that.
Yeah, or I can, uh, come around.
Well, I think just to anecdotally, but, uh, what Ian's talking about compared to the other projects, this one definitely just drive by it. You know, it's more productive than any of the other ones.
So we don't really see the east, the east section, we don't see that. We see corn on the west.
West section? And the east is better?
That's what's being said here.
No, east is.
East is better, east is more primed than west.
Yes, the only difference is the drainage, that's the only difference. West if drained is primed. East is primed.
East is wet.
I don't get this.
Okay. There. So. The triangles. Over here. That's. Prime farm when they drain.
The west three ten or something.
Three ten is by your, your case. And then the axes. Over here is prime farming. So this is the west and the east.
Bagger, as I'm looking at the county's, uh, data, it says the opposite. Wondering, one of the sources, the county source could be, could be.
And corn.
What about the land below on the, uh, west side?
The land below.
That, that's. So, does that mean?
So, this is prime, a little tiny pieces prime over here.
The triangle means prime is drained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's almost like it's backwards.
Yeah. And the, the soil data you're pulling in on there.
It's from the USDA.
The N R C S.
Sorry, I don't know.
It's a soil thing.
Oh. Uh, would you have a soil map in the SWIP?
Yeah, see, my sources show Musklunsh on the east part.
On the east. Or frack, is it? Yeah. It's, it's, it's Musklunsh, um.
Evan, in the, in the SWIP is your other, other source for the prime farmland, is that correct?
Yeah, in the SWIP we include a, um. The report from, uh, I'm sorry, I said USDA, I said, I meant USGS.
Right.
Yeah. But soil reports there and that soil report lists what each soil is. And also on the SWIP it has, uh, all the soil boundaries too.
Right. I, I'm seeing that, it looks, it looks like on the map you shared, um. The soil types usually, it seems like what we've seen in the past, prime is the fir- the first. The group the four soil types together. And then prime of drain is another four, and then so is of statewide significance. It looks like your polygons were grouped together in that manner rather than distinguish between the individual soil types. From, from the map you showed us there.
Oh, yeah, you know, it could be two adjacent soils that.
Right.
Are the same specification.
Where the SWIP has the soil boundaries on it, it looks like.
Yeah.
Is there a discussion on this section?
I would say I'm totally confused on this. Sort of.
Is there, is there something I could?
I don't know, could you answer? I, I had, I mean, look, for me, I, I've been associated with that land for probably thirty years since I worked at the school. And I've seen them grow. Corn on that land for a long time. And, uh. The corn is generally as high as any around. And, uh, now you're, now you're saying that it's not really prime farming.
So I would caveat this whole thing. The USGS, they, when they get their data, they don't go to the site. They don't test the soil.
Correct.
It's very vague. Which is confusing to the point, so. I'd be hard pressed to make a decision based on something that was online from, from that.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm talking about just looking at it. Every day.
Yeah, because you're saying is, I don't understand it's prime farmland if trained, but yet they're growing corn. Is what your question, is what your point is.
Right.
You're saying is what's online doesn't matter what actually happens. And I'm agreeing and saying. Yeah, that's why you have to take it with a massive, massive brain of salt because. People don't go on site to do it, they just. It's online data based on, you know, kind of a best guess.
Hmm.
So. The prime farmland to me is a little bit confusing.
We should check sources because commonly we'll use the county's source. And they're showing the opposite of what you're showing.
Well, it, it depends, did someone go on site and they look at it or?
They're, they're pulling from the USGS, the N R C S soil data. And you know, interesting, I, I, I agree that it is, um, uh, a larger mapping effort where someone's not on site, but then again, it's all sources back to when they did soil samples. In a grid pattern in the area, granted, it's not, I, I agree, it's not a hundred percent accurate by any means. But I, but I'm, I'm concerned with our, with our, with, uh, what we commonly reference, not saying essentially the opposite of what your site plan is saying. And there, and therefore calculations could, could be. The opposite.
Yeah. Well, we'll move on to number nine, the impact on aesthetic resources. And the land use of the proposed action. Are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns. Between the proposed project. And a scenic or aesthetic resource, and the answer is yes. A, the proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. The answer is no. B, the proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. No impact. C, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points. One, seasonally, small impact. And two, year round, small impact. D, the situation or activity in which viewers are engaged. While viewing the proposed action is, one, routine travel by residents including travel to and from work. Small impact. Two, recreational or tourism-based activities, no impact. E, the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. No impact. And F, there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. Zero to a half mile, half to three miles, three to five, and five plus miles. Small impact. And we've got extensive comments from the engineering. On, uh. C, it's visible from publicly accessible vantage points. Construction activities and the resulting solar array will be visible from nearby properties and people traveling along State Highway three ten. The project is unlikely to be visible to the citizens enjoying nearby municipal parks. And aesthetic resources within the town. Including the Remington Recreation Trail. The Remington Recreation Trail is approximately zero point five miles to the west of the site. Across Highway three ten. The recreation trail is surrounded by existing mixed forest cover which will not be disturbed by the project. Additionally, there's proposed landscaped buffering along the western edge of the proposed. Solar array which will buffer visual changes from nearby vantage points. The solar array and associated infrastructure will result in permanent visual change to the local view shed. The solar panels will be up to twenty feet tall. Deciduous trees are present along the solar array to the north and south. Out, outs, um, outside of the project's limits of disturbance. Point one six acres of tree clearing is proposed, which will take place sporadically throughout the site. Evergreen scre- screening trees and shrubs will be planted along the western boundary of the project site. Parallel to State Highway three ten. The screening vegetation will reduce visual impacts to nearby properties. Colliers Engineering and Design completed a visual impact assessment for the project, which included photo simulations. Of the proposed solar arrays from multiple nearby vantage points. Results found that the solar arrays may be visible to, by two nearby properties. And from people traveling along State Highway three ten. The proposed evergreen screening trees along three ten will reduce visual impacts to nearby properties and travelers. Solar array will be most visible right after construction. And will become less visible five to ten years after installation. As the screening trees continue to grow. As documented on the visual impact assessment. The solar array will remain visible from State Highway through ten near the proposed access drive. But the remainder of the site will be surrounded by screening trees. Or existing trees that will remain intact. The town of Canton Planning Board has reviewed the proposed site plans and visual. Assessment to ensure that adverse. Impacts are minimized to the extent. The town of Canton Planning Board has reviewed the proposed site plans and visual assessment to ensure that adverse impacts are minimized to the extent possible. The proposed overhead utility poles will be similar to existing utility poles along highway three ten. There any comments on this section?
I don't know if I'm uh, sorry, go ahead. No, no. I was just gonna say, uh, regarding, you know, I mean, we're, we're talking about a single project here, you know, but the elephant in the room is the fact that, you know, we have potential for three. You know, so I don't know if legally, maybe this is a question for Bill, you know, we can consider the other two when talking about visual impact. You know, I know I remember seeing the uh, the proposed visual impact and thinking, you know, this is up on a hill and the, the screening really. Didn't make me feel all warm and fuzzy, you know, and I won't speak for anybody else, but. I mean, this has the potential of making a significant change at the intersection of state street and three ten. You know, the, the three together.
I can respond um, with the notion that we are supposed to look at the cumulative impacts. Of the actions that come before us, so it's perfectly.
Okay.
Okay, to look at the impacts of multiple projects on a particular view shed. So I, I agree with that comment.
Okay.
Well, this is also a, a, a good uh, a good, I think uh, us to segregate the two projects. And because the uh, west project is very visible. Whereas the uh, east, east project is not visible hardly at all. If you stand up on the, by the, the high school, you look right down on the Hayes Farm. There's no, there's, there's no FM, there's no screening from the high school, none at all. So the, the two projects are really different in uh, aesthetic, in the impact on aesthetics. The two, they're not the same.
No.
The one is gonna be right up close to three ten. And the other one, probably you'd hardly be able to see it all, even with no screening. Even at, even at, at the school, you won't be able to see it. Yeah. On the, the east project, you won't be able to see. Other comments? Well, we'll move to number ten, an impact on historic and archaeological resources, the answer was no. Number eleven, the impact on open space and recreation, the answer is no. Number twelve, impact on critical environmental areas, the answer is no. Number thirteen, the impact on transportation, and the answer is no. Number fourteen, the impact on energy, and the answer is no. Number fifteen, the proposed action may result in increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting, the answer was yes. A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. And a small impact. B, the proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home, no impact. C, the proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, no impact. D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties, no impact. E, the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, no impact. Did you wanna go, go back to touch on what you talked about before?
Yeah, just sharing sources with uh, Evan in terms of uh, prime and prime of strain farmland. Uh, just that we, we should, we should probably do some sort of recalculation, well, I guess um, I know this is going back to the farmland piece.
That's alright.
Um. Barton Le- Le- Le Judas, did they do calculations for prime and prime of drain?
How many acres?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had.
Forty-four, forty-four.
And does it match what Colliers was?
It does not um, specify which, who drains or which.
Okay.
They had forty-four acres of prime, forty-four point two acres of prime if drained. And three point four acres of statewide importance.
Gotcha.
It doesn't say whether, where it is on.
Yeah, our numbers would be looking at both sites um, together, keep, like, at the site as a cumulative action.
Gotcha. Who does, does the planning board wanna know which site is which soil type?
If I'm understanding correctly, the east is more prime and less visible.
I see, I swear I would counter, I think the, the, the data that Evan was sharing was incorrect in terms of prime if drained on the east. Sorry, if prime on the east, east is showing more prime if drained, west is showing more prime.
The east land is wetter.
Is it better soil or not?
It's wetter, wetter. Yeah.
So east is worse soil and not this.
Correct.
That's what, that's.
You know, we've farmed it for years. That back parcel. We sell. He's farming sits on that crown, that's where.
Yeah, that's why, make sure the planning board and the audience.
But thank, we thank you for that update, Tom.
Yeah.
We're back.
So then fifty-one point nine total acres of farmland involved in the actual. System.
Yes.
Okay.
Said forty-four, forty-four.
Right.
That's the property.
Right.
Right.
We are, we are impacting.
Right.
So where is the five, of the fifty-one acres that's being impacted?
Gotcha, that, that would be, that would be nice.
And what is the revision of it? Twenty-six on one and twenty-one in another.
I farm, it's all prime.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice to have that breakdown from.
I guess we'll have to, you know, because we, we have the, you know, break down the map on. In the plan set, but you're saying that data is not correct?
Well, the, the way, the, the, the image, the map you just showed us, I'm not sure, I should check yours, like plan.
Is uh, Kayla did, so it sounds like that. When you looked at the soil groups, did it show something similar or? I don't, we didn't get a comment about.
Yeah, I mean, we, we typically look at USDA web soil um, mapping and we'll do our own analysis. I know you guys include that in your SWIP as well. Um, that's the typical source that we use um. I am curious what the county source is saying. Cause a lot of times, you know, we, we will look at other sources if they're available. But USCAs are typical go-to when it comes to the, looking at the soils and the analysis of uh, farmland uh, status.
Yeah, I would say the soil is the same there, the county using the USDA NRCS soil data. I'm just wondering what a, what, what the calculation would be for under each solar array. Um, and then break it down by prime and prime if drained underneath that, instead of the whole parcel.
Instead of the whole parcel.
That seems to be a, a number that would be, would be helpful and just in terms of the visual as well, it seems like, as I'm looking at it. Prime if drained towards east, prime towards the west.
Is there um, is there a specific code in the, in the solar code that says that? That quantifies what you can and can't do on prime farmland?
It's, it's more so a suggestion, there's no, there's no real.
The, the local laws. Prime soils from.
Which we're not.
Parcel, which each vision in the, on, in a few places, namely the plan set.
I would add that the uh, two thirty-nine review. Uh, resulted in a negative determination from the county because of the same issue. Uh, it is the county's policy not to develop prime farmland. So we, we also must have a super majority from this board. Uh, if it chooses to, or to approve this application as well, just another data point for you.
No, we're, we're, we're clear on the uh, the, the removal, it's the, the word of void. That we see in the lot, you know, to not, to avoid prime and private change soils, but then again, you know, what if this was a subdivision? On the same.
Well, it's gonna be, it's also.
Right.
And you lose farmland for.
I'm not comprehensive plan side, which doesn't cross three ten, but that's essentially, I think that's what I've been trying to get at, that's what we want to see, right? We'd want to see that type of development close to the village core, rather than having uh, solar projects and then we skip. And put more development outside of those that puts, you know, communities even further away from, say, the village core. But I'm, 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 I'm with you, yeah, yeah, I see.
Using one justification that I, to deny it, but then leveraging that the, the.
I said, that's, that's my personal opinion, however, it's, it's not in, it's not in land use regs, it's in the comprehensive plan kind of vaguely, just, just thinking ten, twenty, thirty years down the road.
But the, the, does the local code have a? Gives a num- number on how much prime farmland you can use?
No, not, not at this time.
I think on one of your plans it has it broken down.
Yeah, so I wonder.
I thought we suggested.
Yep, yeah. As it stands, it's still permitted use in that zone when it comes out.
It wouldn't have been if it were the pastor.
We'll, we'll move back to the number fifteen, the impact on noise, odor, and light. Um, the comments are ambient noise levels will be needed temporarily during construction. Excess noise will be limited to daylight hours to minimize adverse impacts to the community and nearby receptors. Construction will be completed during weekday daytime hour. Elevated noise conditions will be temporary and will end once construction is complete. Construction is anticipated to last about six months. The noise analysis was completed by Epsilon Associates to assess potential impacts to surrounding properties. Related to noise generated at the project site. During project operations, the inverters will produce a low hum at approximately forty-five decibels to the nearest residential receptor. This noise level is comparable to conversational speech and is not expected to adversely impact nearby properties. All that they said on that.
I have just a, a question. If this is temporary in terms of construction or whatever, they said there was no impact on transportation.
Correct.
Okay, I figured during construction.
The, the, that, that, the, the impact on tr- transportation is that the proposed action may result in a change.
And the transportation system, rather than a, a current, small, right, period of time.
So they're.
And yet the noise was, okay, okay.
Number sixteen is the impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. And they said yes. A, the proposed action is located within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home, or retirement community. And it said that moderate to large impact may occur. I can read through all the rest, but they were all deemed to be no impact.
What did they say about A?
And about A? The project site is located directly across state highway three ten from the Canton Daycare Center. No date impacts to the daycare center will result from the project. Construction activities will be restricted to the project site limits and will not impact access to or use of this facility. Um, B and L did not comment on the fact that it's a nurse, there's a nursing home right there too, but. Number seventeen is the consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, the answer is yes. A, the proposed action's land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. And they said moderate to large impact may occur. Uh, all the other questions were no impact. And. The uh. The comments are that the proposed solar array is not consistent with surrounding land use patterns, which generally include rural residential properties and vacant forested and agricultural land. Project site is located within town of Canton's rural zoning district. The town of Canton passed a solar law in two thousand nineteen permitting major solar energy systems. Through the issuance of a special use permit in rural zoning districts. The applicant will secure a special use permit for the project from the town planning board. And the project will be designed and constructed in accordance with all conditions of the special use permit.
How can it be in sharp contrast to surrounding land use patterns when there's a solar array going up across the street?
And there's another one on, on Johnson, it's had to build it down, but again, then again, uh, those aren't built yet. Once those are built and say grassy grove would be built, so is the character of that neighborhood now? Like, so you use as part of the character of the neighbors? But at the moment, it's not.
At the moment, it's not, but it's gonna be.
Right.
Kind of ties in with number eighteen, the consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, and the answer is yes. A, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community, no impact. B, the proposed action may create a demand for additional community services. And there's no impact. C, the proposed action may displace affordable or low income housing. In an area where there's a shortage of such housing, there's no impact. D, the proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized but designated public resources, and there's no impact. E, the proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character, no impact. And F, the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. And it's rated as a moderate to large impact. Currently. Says existing natural.
Yeah.
Um, and the comments are the solar array and infrastructure will result in a permanent visual change to local view shed. Which will be a new use in the immediate vicinity of the project site. Solar panels will have a maximum height of twenty feet tall. Additional screening trees will plant, be planted along the western boundary of the site adjacent state highway three ten, further reduce visual impacts. Proposed overhead utility poles will be similar to existing utility poles located along three ten. Additionally, there are similar large scale solar projects in nearby municipalities. No adverse impacts, community character expected to result from the project.
There's no comments about the one residence that's gonna be physically surrounded, right?
Nobody's commented about that. So this is another example of the two projects being, having a different, you could look, if you looked at the, the west one. And thought of it like this, you, you think of it one way and you look at the east one and you think it another way.
Um. Dude, I got a p- a piece of information to share, found it, Evan, on your site plan, page twelve out of nineteen. It has the breakdowns of the soils, which seem, seem to be correct in relation, in contrast to the map, in terms of how your symbols. In terms of how your symbols were were made out and it states uh. And has a ver- east versus west project on the east project. No, the the values, the values are incorrect, these projects says thirty-seven point seven acres of prime farmland. And then on the west, it has six acres. Which would support your initial thought. But I'm I'm still thinking on the other side that that those numbers are backwards, believe. I was a bit confused.
But if you've taken. How many, how many acres are in the east?
In total? Forty-five.
Did was it split the site into?
Closer to three ten is.
So those calc, those calc in the bottom right there are just in terms of the whole parcel. Well, seemed to be cleared up from the two gentleman there, which very helpful, thank you.
And people need a break before we address section three. And we'll just go. I don't know if anybody else.
I did not print those out.
I I I forgot to print some.
I was, did you include it?
No, no, I did not. I was trying to deal with this all day and.
Anyways, it basically that the chart. I I filled it out from my perspective uh based on what came out of the secret part two. And under each category, the magnitude of impact, the duration, and the likelihood of it occurring are the three columns. And the first was the impact on land and it was rated as a moderate impact. And I said that it was gonna be long term and that it and that will happen. Impact on geologic features, there was no impact, impact on surface water. Was small impact, um mostly silk when they were uh doing construction. But with the squip. Uh be limited, uh be short term. The impact on groundwater, there was no impact on flooding. From the part two, a small impact. From the roadway and the um concrete platforms, hit the pads. Um that would be obviously long term and it would happen. The impact on air, there's no impact. Impact on plants and animals, uh small impact. Uh but it would be long term and it will happen. The impact on agricultural resources is uh moderate or large, depending on how you wanna. Talk about it, uh duration would be long term and it will happen. The impact on aesthetic resources is large. And long term and it will happen. Impact on historic and archaeological resources was no impact. Open space and recreation, no impact. Critical environmental areas, no impact. Transportation, no impact, energy, no impact. Impact on noise, odor and light, small impact, short duration during construction, that would happen. Impact on human health. Small impact uh long term. And it would happen and uh the human health was relative to the daycare center and nursing home. The inconsistency with community plans, a moderate impact, long term and it would happen. And the same with the consistency with community character, modern impact, long term. Now, we've been significant discussion in the last few days about whether. The secret part three. Should be done separately for both projects or as one. And the most recent update was that it's to be dealt with. Because dealing with the thing as a whole considers the biggest possible environmental. Basically, we have three choices as the planning board, as lead agency, that we can. Classify this project. A, this project will result to no significant adverse impacts on the environment. And therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared accordingly, a negative declaration is issued. B, although this project could have significant adverse impact on the environment. That impact will be avoided or substantially mitigated because of the following conditions, which will be required by the lead agency. There will therefore be no significant adverse impacts from the project as conditioned and therefore. This condition negative declaration is included is issued. A conditioned negative declaration may be used only for unlisted actions. And C, this project may result in one or more significant adverse impacts on the environment. An environmental impact statement must be prepared to further assess the impacts and possible mitigation. And to explore alternatives to avoid or reduce those impacts. Accordingly, this positive declaration is issued. Do we have any comments?
Sure, I think this is a question for Bill. If I was inclined to have a negative. Negative determination, my own personal, um negative determination for the east and a positive determination for the west. That would mean that at this point I would voice approval of a positive. Declaration. As a whole, correct?
We've been grappling with this issue over two projects, one review. And what I learned today from my discussions with Liza. Is that the project that was proposed originally as possible, but within our connection issues. Maybe more of a a positive outcome, more likely to be developed than they originally thought. And this is through the interconnection studies that they that they typically do. So it looks as though um there is a strong potential for both of those projects to get interconnected and to move forward. So, to go back to your question. I'm concerned about reviewing the projects independently. Uh and concluding different things for the projects, for each of the projects. Because of something we call segmentation, which is. Approving a single part of a project without considering the whole impact or the cumulative impacts. Which is why I've come around to the opinion that we should look at both of them together. And make your determination based on what are the impacts for both projects in your determination. So my my view is that you should look at them both and and not independently. You can certainly have different views of the different parcels that are being developed. But a different outcome for each project. Something I haven't really advised you to do. I, my advice is to look at them both and to make your determination on both.
Can I, can I ask a question, Bill, why? What what's the downside to considering them separately? We've raised some obvious issues with with either side.
Well, the argument is segmentation, it's that, uh with without considering. The impact of both, that you're only looking at one narrow set of issues instead of the impact on.
Community Solar says that each of these are supposed to be looked at as a separate project. That that I've I've never been okay personally, and this is my personal statement with the fact that you can run a road down the middle and call it two projects.
Well, then we agree, um my my advice is to look at the cumulative impact of this development. Which is being proposed as an east and west, is it really two projects or is it one large project on two parcels?
But Community Solar says that that the size of one should be the limiting. Factor, it shouldn't be considered as one because it's outside of the rules.
Well, the 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 genesis of that is what is permissible under the Community Solar statutory scheme. In other words, you can't go above five megawatts or. For economic reasons, for nicer reasons, for interconnection reasons. We're looking at this as a development, not not the artificial line of five megawatts each. We we're being presented with X number of acres that are being developed under this application. So my advice is to look at the whole, not the individual projects, I understand the distinction. And why there's a distinction, but it is an environmental distinction, it's a business and financial distinction. Does that make sense, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, it does, it doesn't improve my liking of it anymore, to be honest, you know, like I I am seriously concerned that this is gonna set a precedent.
Grappling with one project, I, so speaking of them as two projects. One project has. An impact on really good farmland and one. And one has an impact on community character and one has significantly less of it. And it just so happens that the one that has the worst farmland is the one that has less impact on community character.
Guess you did a better job of explaining that than I did, Bill.
It seems like a nice gizmo to uh have one side sell sell us on the other side. Which I don't like. Cause if we s- we looked at these five and and also it allows uh a ten megawatt project to go on a piece of land. That would be against the rules. But now since you said, since you put it into two projects, then we can look at them. But now we we look at them together. But I I can't help but look at them separately and there's there seems to be a difference between the two projects. But I'm not, I'm I don't have a legal head, so I can get lost in this legality business.
But. What's the applicant's position on this question?
Me by against the rules for a mega walk project.
Well, on my understanding was if you're, unless you, unless you had two separate pieces of land. If you wanna be have a community solar project, it has to be five make a below.
So they.
I also had a question, I from. My company specifically and other developers in the solar industry do have co-located community solar projects. Uh it's just about where the energy input is going and the different levels. With that, um for instance, uh if there was a ten megawatt. Single project, it could uh it would be a different level permitting, it would go right through this. Right to state permitting, it wouldn't go through the town permitting at all. Uh and it has to do with the green incentives proposed. With those different types of programs, it's it's those different types of technicalities not. Nicerda does not require two different tax parcels, they don't require two different. Parcels of land, they can, they've approved um two co-located projects on the same parcel of land. So that uh is not necessarily against any rules or whatnot on. What I did, so we proposed two separate projects on the same parcel. And in the beginning, when we first applied back in June, based on the language of the local law, based on. The uh secret process, they based on how different entities, for instance, ag markets. Use these projects as a stacked project. And uh Bill had mentioned segmentation, for that reason, legally could not bring one without the other. If we had plans potentially down the road. And while we started these projects both at the same time, the east project went through the interconnection study. Process much quicker than the west project. On when I was in front of the boards for the first time back in, I believe, July. Uh we explained that um the east project has a much higher competence level, this is still true. Uh we've gone through the process, the uh utility has a certain number of business days for each. On step of the process. And um for the west project, they've actually had two separate extensions of those business day timeframes. It's just a process, when we did leave the interconnection, full report for the west project, there was a section missing, which. Makes a huge difference on on the um competence level we have with that project. While we have received another section of that subsection from the utility, we're still navigating that process. We have not made a deposit on the west project, we've made the full deposit on. The east project and at this point have the signed interconnection agreement on the east project, so there are two separate projects. If on, if this is something the town really struggled with with. And was potentially posdecking both projects, we would like the opportunity to. One, figure out this discrepancy with the soils on the two different mappers and and figure out what's what's possible here. But I don't believe that there's any um. Anything that's against any rules from the town zoning perspective. Um there's been talk about this being in a rural district and that not being um maybe favorable. In certain eyes, however, the town local law specifies that this is a formidable action in. The zone, the rural zoning district and the commercial zoning district, which is how we. Landed on on this parcel and started our outreach from the beginning, was based on interconnection availability. And zoning laws making any, and both of these projects together are fully on. Compliant of the town local solar facilities law of the town zoning. And uh and and also nicer to standards. In the town local solar law, there is reference to on. If there is more than one community solar project or I I would have to look at the exact wording. But there was reference to adding more than one project on the same parcel and and it was saying that. Both must be brought forward. And have that transparency in the beginning, so I I do believe that we are on. Confine of that and I I can.
I would agree with that, I'm just wondering, uh maybe you've explained it, but I just, maybe I missed it. Why, why such a delay on the west project?
You require different upgrades.
We have, yeah, we have a, our counterparties, National Grid, the utility. And um there's, they make the turnaround time. You, we submitted both projects at the same time because the east project went through the process first, it was studied. With that, and I think that there was some back and forth with other projects in the view of moving forward, what was not, the utility didn't know what to. Um report back to us, there's the. um, report back to us. There's the applicant on on what the triggered upgrades for that project were.
So it's as simple as that?
Mm hmm. Yeah, it's and then um there's different turnaround times for each each piece of the project, even when we do get an interconnection study, the full study, they're ready to proceed. We have to wait the uh ninety business days to make the deposit. And then after that, there's a hundred and twenty business days till we can make the, even if we're ready to write a check right then and there. That's the way it works. There's different turnaround times for each part of um the process.
You do we vote on? But I'm I'm a section three.
That's up to you.
I got to sign off on it. And we have to have a decision, A, B, or C. Well, I think the question that Bill asked the developers. And I think the answer was that if there is a chance of posdecking, is that determined? Both or a negative determination on one and a positive determination on the other, that they would like that opportunity, but I don't know that there's. I don't. This is a question for Bill. Is that an opportunity that can be provided?
You have the right as the lead agency to determine whether your your part three will pertain to one or the other or both. That that's that's a call that you can make as as a board. So what where you see different impacts on one side versus the other, you you have the discretion to do a part three for the west side, part three for the east side, and come to different conclusions. My advice would be simply to make sure that you indicate in your in your findings that you considered both before making the decision on each one. It's it's not improper for you to do a part three for the east and a part three for the west, and it's not improper for you to do a part three where you consider both together. You you have discretion on this? My thought has been because of the concerns about a disjointed or segmented kind of uh arguments that us that I'd like you to consider them both. But if you reach a different conclusion, east and west, you're it's certainly okay for you to reach different conclusions. It's not. It's not an illegal thing for you to do. It's not inconsistent law.
I could ask me one more comment. This is um, this pro- these projects have gone through a few rounds of review. We've been in front of the board um multiple times last month was the public hearing. Um, the public hearing comments still haven't been spread aloud or dispersed. And this is the first on time we've heard any feedback about concern of the prime soils on site. There's been discussion of where prime soils on site, but as far as the use of the property, how the landowner can take plans to use the property, the impact that there's being prime soils on the property. What we've discussed at meetings up till this date is confirming the compliance with the local law in that the prime soil on property won't be removed from the property. And then in a similar uh, in the same breath, there's been discussions of the visual impacts of these properties, but only in a complimentary fashion towards the landscaping plan. This is the first I'm understanding there's any concern about the visual impacts of the project. It wasn't brought up by the public. It wasn't brought up. Um, we've in the uh consulting engineers two comment letters to date, we haven't no concerns been raised about the visual impacts of these projects. We've provided very thorough visual assessments. So we we before there's any positive declaration, we'd really like the opportunity to respond and um figure out a solution or even figure out what's what's the path forward here with the east project and the west project. We're still waiting on some confirmations from the utility on the west project. So to posdeck both and then potentially find out from the utility that there is um, a critical error with the west project is is difficult, typically at the point with the utility where we have full interconnection study, we have full confidence, we're still pulling some some of those details out of the utility.
So are you suggesting we hold our for another month?
Um, in the form, in case that there might be a posdeck, yes. I'm just kidding, but yes. Um, if if that is the if the concern is there and if that's where this conversation headed, we'd like the opportunity.
Well, I think you hit the concern is pretty good. The the uh farmland, number one, the aesthetic resources, number two, and probably the character of the community character.
I I I just have to speak up. I have to disagree. I believe that the aesthetics have been brought up before, you know, if not by anybody else, by me. So I don't think that the aesthetics, this is a surprise. I know personally, I've had issues with the aesthetics in the west for as long as the projects have been in front of us. Secondly, um, just while I've got it and I I hate being on Zoom and not being in the room, um, I personally do not want this joint as one project. I want to view them as two separate projects.
The I know I asked this a few times um since we submitted, but was there any code confirmation that the landscape screening is required? I know I asked B and L and I I asked the town. My thinking is if a landscape screening is not required and we still propose one, that means we're going above and beyond what was required. So can you all tell me? Well, the west project, for example, like if we're proposing a landscape screening and that's not required by code, I guess I'm struggling understanding what how we even address that.
Well, it's been the it's been the tradition of the uh previous solar companies to to screen it.
We've we've required everybody else.
Planning board. The mitigation requirement, so it doesn't it doesn't need to emanate from the statute. It can be this board's determination in connection with the the site plan review and the special use permit to attach a condition for visual screening. If your argument is visual screening is not going to be effective, that's a different question.
My argument is we're trying to go above and beyond to address the concerns and meet the code, which we feel like we have that.
I have a question. Was Eric's statement a motion to consider these separately for determination?
Yeah, it's a motion.
I mean, if we're at that point, I'll make a motion to consider both projects as separate entities.
In the seeker process?
Uh, that's what we're talking about, right? Seeker part three.
Yeah, I think you can do that. Eric Eric's made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 About the prime farmland. Was there no prime farmland on um prime rural?
Yeah, I don't think we've seen a county review, a two thirty nine review without this issue, prime farmland being the reason for recommending against it being adopted. Every one of them has had a negative uh negative advice.
Because the county legislators have instructed the planning board to do so.
Yeah.
Well, the I mean, the facts are there's there's prime soils on every project.
So so at this point, Bill, can we um and we are, so we're going to consider the seeker part three for this two projects separately.
Right, that that motion passed, so so now pick a project that you have a couple of different paths you can take. You can make a determination on the east. You can make a determina- nation on the west. Determination on one and table the other, or you can table them both if you feel like further information would be relevant to your consideration of of this question. You you have you have a lot of different options as to how you want to proceed.
Okay.
You you would prefer us to table this for months?
I would, if if the east will be on negda. Yeah, um, I would, it would be my preference that the board proceeded with that and then tabled the west project, not that coming back and I'd be asking to change anything. It's just that once there is a positive declaration that's signed, the only way to report is that or anything is by like a court. Um, so I just would want to table that, table that project entirely until we get even that clarity from the utility on whether or not this project has a path forward, and then we would revisit it. And if the situation was a positive, then I'm not saying necessarily change anyone's mind about it, but just saying, let's not um, close out that issue until we know a little bit more.
Hypothetically, if it was positive, hypothetically, it would be if we held it, like what I was saying, it'd be helpful for us to know what the comments are so we can digest them.
So considering them separately, you mentioned east, correct?
Yeah.
So that would be the one we'd look at first, and then we'd make a determination about that one after that vote. Uh, a quick question for Bill. If if we approve one and table the other one, would we have to go through the seeker process for the other one down the road again if they wanted to pursue that project in the future?
Only answer the things that are changed.
Okay.
And if they come back with no no modifications to the project, then you you've already done a part two, part one and two, and you can proceed to part three. But if they make changes, offer mitigation or recalculation of the prime impacts, then those impacts, those new impacts would have to be considered before you acted the next time around.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Why don't we table both? We're not. We're not in a rush.
Well, I'm okay with that.
We are in a rush. We don't need to table them both. We can consider right now east one right now.
I mean, the impacts, the impacts we're talking about. We've been through seven solar projects. They're all the same impact. They're all the same impacts, the visual and the land. I believe brewers on Mead Road was all prime farmland.
Okay, that location is distinctly.
Judson Street.
I've walked that.
But it's consider, I agree I agree with you, Ian, but it was considered prime farmland. You walked it, but it was considered prime farmland. That's the that's the the degree you got to look at. We've seen all these projects. The land is considered prime farmland, not by the owners of the property, but by someone else that looks at it, sees what top soil types it is and everything, primed, primed if drained. Every project, it's the same impacts.
No, not all on prime farmer.
On prime farmland.
More about the other characters itself.
Three ten, Route three ten.
Yeah, well, look at the sat- look at the saturation of that location. That's different than Brewer.
Judson Street. Route eleven. It's all, it's all, it's the same impacts, impact of visual and impact of farmland.
Sure, visual impact, but increase in the three ten area as we approve more and more projects, right?
Right.
That's that's that's.
Yeah, but what what I'm saying is that each project we've said is the same, I it's the same items that we're looking at. It's a, you know, it's not the degree is that it's the same, the prime farmland and impact.
Right, but the degree may be changing that projects because the saturation of projects, that degree label, that degree.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would, I'll also interject that the difference between, you know, the the sides of three ten and the slope of the lands, you know, the 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 three ten project is going to be easier to screen going downhill than, you know, the the current one going uphill, especially with twenty foot solar arrays.
We'll take a voice vote on whether we can give a negative in declaration for the east project. All in favor? Say hi.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, we got you, Eric. I have to put my name on this.
Yeah. And you got to read that resolution.
Yeah, then we'll do the resolution. Uh, Grassy Grove Solar Project East. But you know the date? Six?
Six.
November sixth.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution ten of twenty twenty three. Is this all the whole thing?
The whole thing. Just make sure you uh, it says solar project. Make sure you put like east.
Yeah. Um, I thought it was four pages in one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please? Uh, according to the two thirty nine review, we need a majority plus one of the members for the planning board. Do we have that present?
We have five, five zero.
Okay, great. See.
Um, resolution number ten of twenty twenty three, proposed action, Grassy Grove Solar East. Resolution determining that the proposed Grassy Grove Solar East and we got to cross out and Grassy Grove. Is a type one action and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Whereas Grassy Grove Solar East LLC applicants are proposing the Grassy Grove Solar East located at two sixty eight State Highway three ten in the town of Canton, St. Lawrence County, New York. And whereas the project has been classified as a type one action as defined by the State Environmental Quality Review Act and six, the NYCRR part six one seven point four. And whereas although the Grassy Grove Solar East and grass, and this one's going to be like although that I'll read it as written, although the Grassy Grove Solar East and Grassy Grove Solar West are individual solar development projects, they are located on two contiguous properties and therefore reviewed under the same seeker process to ensure that cumulative environmental impacts from both projects were considered. To ensure that cumulative environmental impacts from both projects were considered. Bill, does that statement need to be changed?
No, I think you can, you can leave that in and still make a decision on one or the other.
Okay. Whereas the town of Canton planning board sent a letter and part one of a, of a FBAF to other potentially interested agencies. And involved agencies, as these terms are defined in the seeker regulations found as six NYCRR part six one seven point two. Indicating the town planning board's desire to serve as the lead agency. As this quoted term is defined in the seeker regulations. And to complete a coordinated review of the project. In accordance with six NYCRR part six one seven point six. And whereas responses from interested and involved agencies were requested. And each of the potentially interested and involved agencies has agreed to or raised no objections to. The town of Canton planning board serving as lead agency for the project. And whereas pursuant to the seeker regulations. The town of Canton planning board has considered the significance of the potential environmental impacts of the project. By A, using the criteria specified in section six one seven point seven of the seeker regulations. And B, examining the FBAF for the project. Including the facts and conclusions in parts one, two, and three of the FBAF. Together with other available supporting information. To identify the relevant areas of environmental concern. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Canton planning board hereby establishes itself as lead agency for the project. And be it further resolved that based on an examination of the FBAF, other available supporting information. Considering both the magnitude and importance of each relevant area of environmental concern. And based further upon the town's knowledge of the area surrounding the project. The town of Canton planning board makes the determination that the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact. And that the project will not require the preparation of draft environmental impact statement. And be it further resolved that as a consequence of such findings and declaration. And in compliance with the requirements of seeker, the town of Canton planning board as lead agency. Hereby directs the town of Canton planning board chair to sign the FBAF part three determination of significance. Indicating that a negative declaration has been issued for the project. This resolution shall take effect immediately and will be properly noticed. The question of adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote and upon roll call, the vote was as follows, we'll pass it around. Maybe we have to make some note added to Eric being.
Yeah, just, um. He'll vote and put on it via Zoom and he'll have to come in and sign.
And we do have enough votes.
Yes.
Without him either way.
Well, yeah, either way, but I'm just, he's, he's attending via Zoom, we just gotta make a note that he's attending.
We need to get them comments on the public hearing.
Yeah, we're not, we're not done quite yet.
Wait on this, uh. Talking to his kid while he's on Zoom and sign languages.
We're talking about.
Eric, would you vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just stop in one day and sign this if you would please, Eric.
Okay, yeah. Which, uh, which office would that be at, Mike?
Uh, Heidi's office.
Okay.
I'll just leave it with Heidi.
Okay.
Thank you.
So at this point, uh, Bill, we tabled the. Decision on four, or on, uh, on west.
So, so that's been tabled, so you can take that up again.
Do we need to make a motion to table it?
No, well, go ahead, go ahead, I think, I think as a formality, that's a good idea.
Yeah, second.
Sure.
Second. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
So we've passed aside with nothing but to move. The west project. What do you folks wanna have happen from here?
Need a drink. I, I guess it would be helpful to, to compile the comments and then we'll have to go back to when. See how we can address them and.
The west.
How are the public comments gonna be?
Basically, uh, the only one that I have that's, uh, public is yours. Not at this point.
Oh, we got two. We got one from Mr. Hayes and one from Mr. Hayes.
And theirs was specifically asked not to be public.
Well, if they submitted to during the public hearing, it's public.
Way before.
But she gets the option to track. I don't know. Everyone's, um, totally attached to the beating minutes, and the beating minutes will then get posted.
Yes, yeah, that's what we hope. Yes, yes.
Just wondering, because they're in public comments.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to new business, um. Future meeting, or do we have anything besides?
Well.
Scheduling future meetings, do you have anything news for us?
Are. Hmm, I'm throwing this out to the board. What do you, what do you wanna do with the east project?
The east project?
Besides the, um, speaker.
Do you wanna consider the, the resolution to approve the site plan?
Resolution to prove it, or do you wanna table that as well?
No, we, we'd like to finish it. Oh, okay, I, I knew it was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I.
You wanna read it, Charlie?
Read some of it.
I'm, I'm up to full in costume.
And I could just give a, and maybe if you've already been fully updated on what's happened since the last meeting, then obvious effect down, but. If we'd like to, I'll be, make sure everyone's looped in and everything. Since your last year, October second was the public hearing. Um, after the public hearing. We resubmitted to the town with a response to comment letter to the consulting engineer B and L's original comment letter. And with that response to comment letter, um, we updated various items, the site plan, stormwater, the SWIP, um. EAF, uh, we updated photo sims. We updated the army for correspondence, we updated slightly the O and M operations and maintenance and decommissioning plan. Um, the O and M plan just said east in one place that was supposed to say west, that was for the most part the change. The new, we submitted new materials of layer analysis, the noise analysis. Um, we submitted, uh, the ship oh no effect letter. We submitted all agency correspondence, US fish and wildlife, all of that, it might have been included in the original one, but I. I noticed it was resubmitted again as well. Uh, we submitted camp, the Canton fire department correspondence, um, the national grid, um. Study for the west project, we had submitted the east one in the original submission, but we didn't have that yet for the west project. And equipment specs, B and L has already reviewed everything and replied, um, provided a. Um, re-submission comment letter in which they went through all their documents we've submitted to date. And outlined on the response to each, um, uh, with. One or two comments of items to provide in the future once we do. Uh, for instance, nicer to funding, once that if and when that goes through. Pass that along to the town, that was the majority issue, there was one suggestion for the west project to mirror the, um. Uh, equipment pad and move it to the other side of the access road, just so it's that much further away than. That from any neighbors who were carrying that, that change through, that was just, um, relayed to us last week, so it takes a little bit to carry it through all the. All the plans set, and then from there we did go back and forth with. Um, the draft conditional site plan approval resolutions. And, and went through that, so at, now you might have already known all of that, but that's what's happened since the last, um. The last meeting, the one item that's, um, new here is with the. Um, the east project receiving a negative declaration, the west project being completely tabled. The two projects have a very clear cut, um, separation with the exception of the landscaping plan. Um, I think that if only the east project proceeds, or we might need. Um, some time to take a look at that and, and provide what we think would be best for the east project, maybe a conditional one. If both projects proceed, this is the landscaping plan, if one project proceeds, this is what's best to, um, screen the east project. Um, so that's my one comment on the board. Up to the board what the board would like to do at this point.
Resolution number eleven of twenty twenty-three. Resolution approving site plan for grassy grove solar east LLC project dated November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas grassy grow solar east LLC applicant proposed to construct a five point zero megawatt alternating current solar power generation facility. On twenty-six point one acres of a ninety-two point three acre lot owned by Irma Hayes. Located at two sixty-eight state highway three ten Canton, New York. Text ID seventy-four dot zero zero four dash seven dash seventy-three. And whereas proposed facility will be operated by grassy grow solar east LLC, who will enter into lease with the owner for the use of. Of the property for the facility, whereas pursuant to the town of Canton local law number three of two thousand nineteen. Proposed facility is considered a major solar collection system as permitted. Is permitted through dis- issuance of a special use permit in commercial and rural zoning districts subject to site plan review and approval by the town Canton planning board. And whereas in July twenty twenty-three, applicants submitted an application to the planning board seeking site plant approval and. Decide plan use permit for the facility, and whereas documents submitted by the applicant as part of its initial application submission and numerous subsequent submissions consisted of. Among other things, one, an application, two, a full environmental assessment form. Three, site plans, four, requisite filing fee and escrow amount for the application, and five, a variety of additional documents. Collectively, the application, and whereas the planning board with the assistance of its technical and legal consultants engaged in a detailed review of the application. Materials, and whereas on October second, twenty twenty-three, the planning board held a public hearing for the facility to gather comments and consider the verbal. And written comments submitted by the public. And whereas pursuant to the town of Canton zoning law, the planning board has taken into consideration of location, arrangement. Size, design, and general compatibility of the facility, to surrounding. Uses, the potential glare and noise impacts, the adequacy of storm water and drainage facilities, the adequacy of land. Of landscaping affecting visual and noise buffers and the overall impact on the neighborhood. And whereas the application is considered a type one action under the New York State Environmental Quality Union Act. Whereas the planning board declared its intent to be lead agency and conducted a coordinated review of its established. Of the establishment of lead agency and of the application pursuant to seeker. And circulated said intent to all involved and interested agencies. Whereas all involved and interested agencies either consented to the planning board being lead agency. Or allowing the thirty day period to lapse, and the planning board as lead agency conducted a thorough review of. Project carefully examining all the potential impacts of the proposed project. Whereas the planning board has thoroughly reviewed part two and three of the EAF. And has been assisted in the review of the secret documents and application by its consulting engineers Barton and Le Judas. Whereas a full statement of the proposed action was referred to the count, the St. Lawrence County Planning Agency and the planning agency disapproved the project. At their meeting dated August tenth, twenty twenty-three, and referred back to the planning board for consideration. The planning board has ultimate decision power in this case and can overrule the county planning agency's referral with a majority plus one vote. Whereas on November sixth, twenty twenty-three, the planning board approved. Parts two and three of the EAF and issued a seeker negative declaration for the project asset fourth on the EAF part three has written. Well reasoned statement which concludes that the facility will not create any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement. Will not be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with the town of Canton zoning law, the planning board hereby grants the site plant approval requested by the applicant. And issues a special use permit requested by the applicant, subject to the following conditions which must be satisfied unless otherwise stated. Prior to the stamping and signing of the site plans by the planning board chairperson. One, the applicant shall provide all requested information outlined in B and L's comment letter dated October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Two, the applicant shall enter into a decommissioning agreement which shall be approved by the town of Canton. Town Canton board and the town attorney and signed by the town supervisor by the applicant and by the property. Three, the applicant shall issue a performance bond or other equivalent financial security. For the decommissioning of the facility, which shall be approved by the town board and the town attorney. Four, B and L has proposed to town board to provide engineering services in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And to the town board, and the town board shall enter into a engineering escrow agreement with the applicant. In which the applicant will agree to fund the escrow amount of fifteen thousand dollars to compensate the town of Canton for having B and L inspect. And advise the town and planning boards on the compliance of the construction with the approved drawings. The engineering escrow agreement must be approved by the town board and town attorney and signed by the town supervisor and by the applicant. Five, the engineering escrow fund referenced above in section four will also be used to compensate B and L staff. For the labor and expenses incurred in performing semi annual site inspections of the facility during the spring. On or about April fifteenth and fall on or about October fifteenth. After construction is complete, the above referenced construction inspection is complete. Wait, after construction is complete and the above referenced construction is complete. I think that should, should be a comma there, B and L shall therefore. Do semi annual site inspections of the condition of the perimeter landscaping and site access road and the overall condition of the site. On a yearly basis, the applicant shall place twenty-five hundred dollars in the town's escrow account to cover the cost of the semi annual site inspection. Following each semi annual site inspection, B and L will provide a written update to the town and planning boards. The semi annual site inspections will be preformed each year that the facility is in operation. Six, the applicant shall post a bond or other equivalent security for the operation and maintenance of the facility. Including the maintenance of the perimeter landscaping and site access. Including the maintenance of the perimeter landscaping and site access road at the sole expense of the applicant. The bond or other equivalent security must be approved by the town board and town attorney. And the bond or the security shall not exceed one percent of the cost of the facility. Seven, the applicant shall have the landscaping inspected at its expense, its expense. Once a year for the first five years of operation by a registered landscape architect or arborist. And the applicant must submit a written report to the town and planning boards identified. Identifying any areas of landscaping that have died or not thrived and will be replaced by the applicant. The applicant shall provide the town and planning boards of copies of a written agreement with the owner of the property, demonstrating that the applicant has the authority. To construct the facility on the property. Nine, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards with a signed notice of intent, NOI. And acknowledge and acknowledgement of receipt of by the state of New York Department of Environmental Conservation of the NOI. And the final stormwater pollution prevention plan. Ten, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards and B and L with a written proposed schedule for construction of the facility. Eleven, prior to commencing the operation of the facility, applicant must meet with emergency responders at the site to discuss. The procedures to be followed in the event of a fire or other emergencies. Within five days of the meeting, the applicant must provide to provide the town supervisor and town and planning boards with hard copies of the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes must indicate the name and contact information for each of the attendees. And provide a detailed description of the procedures that will be followed by emergency responders in the event of a fire or emergency. Twelve, the applicant shall provide payment for all outstanding fees, including any invoices by planning board and or town board consultants and attorneys. Thirteen, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards with copies of all other approvals issued for the facility, including all local and state permits. As required and sign off by all interested parties and involved agencies. Yep, thirteen fourteen, the applicant has no present plans for additional expansion of the facility. Fifteen, the applicant will notify in writing by US Postal Service to town and planning boards thirty days prior to the sale. Assignment LLC membership purchase agreement or transfer of the facility to another entity that is not affiliated. As not an affiliate of the project company that owns the facility. The new nor new owner of the facility must provide the town and planning boards with their contact information, including mailing addresses, telephone numbers, and email address. Moreover, no sale, transfer, or assignment may take place unless the new owner agrees in writing to comply with the conditions of the approval. Sixteen, in the event of the that the Town of Canton receives complaints regarding glare impacts from the facility onto affected landowner properties. And or public roadway surrounding project on a code enforcement action is commenced in a court of competent jurisdiction against the applicant. On the basis of such complaints and a conviction or plea is obtained, the applicant must identify the source of the glare impacts. And implement immediate mitigation measures to notify the town in writing of the mitigation measures undertaken. Seventeen, in the event that the Town of Canton receives complaints regarding glare and or noise impacts from the facility onto affected landowner properties. And a code enforcement action is commenced in a court of competent jurisdiction against the applicant on a basis of such complaints. And a conviction or plea is obtained, the applicant must identify the source of the glare or noise impacts. And implement appropriate mitigation measures and notify the town in writing of the mitigation measures undertaken. Eighteen, if the completion of the facility and prior to the commencement commencement of operation, the applicant shall retain. The services of a New York State licensed professional engineer to provide host construction certification that the facility complies. With applicable codes and industry practices and has been constructed according to the approved design plans. The applicant shall also provide certification from National Grid. That the interconnection from the solar facility to the electric transmission line has been inspected and approved. Nineteen, the applicant and any successor or assigned must maintain commercially reasonable general liability insurance in amount. No less than one million dollars each occurrence and two million dollars general aggregate. And must name the Town of Canton as an additional insured on the policy and provide a waiver of subrogation to the town. Twenty, upon the applicant entering into payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with the Saint Lawrence County Industrial Development Agency. If applicable, the applicant shall provide a copy to the town and the town, I guess, just says town and town. I don't know what that means there, the town and maybe town planning board and town. Town attorney, it must be the town uh town council and the town attorney. Twenty-one, the applicant shall enter into a host community benefit agreement with the town as required by paragraph F seven of the zoning law. And be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes and directs the planning board chairperson to stamp and sign the site plans upon applicant satisfaction. Of all applicable conditions set forth above and be it resolved further. Be it further resolved that this site plan approval and site plan. Special use permit shall be valid for the period of eighteen months from the date it is issued unless the applicant applies in writing to the planning board for. One year extension of at least thirty days prior to the initial expiration period. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the Town of Canton clerk, town clerk. Within five days of the date of this resolution and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five day period. You, I think, I think we you should fix this though. The town and town is in, it's in, okay, it's in twenty.
Do we need anything in that um? Relative to the possible changes in screening, like rising or something? In case both projects don't get done, that'll there would be a new screening plan for just this one?
You got to say. Got to vote.
We're gonna vote, we get passed it around?
But do we, do we need anything in here relative to the change in screening plans or potential change in screening plans?
I would say. If the, I would make a. Probably a condition twenty-two, if the West. Site, if the West site. Does not transition into. A solar, a community solar site, a. Uh, landscaping plan should be submitted, something.
Mike, will the will the landscape plan be on the site plan that's submitted?
It it is, it's on the site plan. That's been submitted, well hypothetically, if if the wet or. But if the West doesn't go through hypothetically. We'd have to make a condition that they resubmit a new landscape screening for the East site. Does that make sense?
So there wouldn't be reflected on the site plan, the plantings that are proposed, because if it's on the site plan, it's ultimately submitted. That gets approved, then we don't need an additional recital in this document.
I think the comment that we were intending here is the landscaping plan as currently proposed. Pugs the the proposed fence line of the West project, I guess doesn't hug the fence line because we. Have setbacks included, but it follows the fence line of the West project. And in the case that the West project was not to proceed and the East project was to proceed, that would just seem arbitrary and. If it is off of grounds of prime farmland, we'd be bisecting that.
Okay, yep, okay, so it's already on there actually.
If the vegetation, yeah, the landscape plan is on the.
On the plan, okay.
But it's, it's would be, it would have to be revised.
Right, and I I think all the other features included on the plan set are very clear which project they. Are included in, we have an overall site plan sheet and then we have east plan sheets and west plan sheets. And the one item that is kind of in the gray area is the landscaping plan shown on the overall site plan sheet.
You wanna put. Eric, what'd you vote on the? Um, the resolution for approval of the special use permit and site plan for the East project?
I believe everybody went yes, I didn't see an issue with that.
Yes.
He zoomed by his and then he'll stop and then sign it.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Ian.
One more signature. Dated.
Eleven side, eleven five, eleven six. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I guess we're done with that one for now. New business. Future meeting scheduling. Oh, do you have anything to spring on us tonight or no?
No, I don't. I haven't, no, I don't.
Okay.
Projects are moving forward, that's all.
Future meeting scheduling, we're normally scheduled to meet first Monday of the month. Yeah. The question is, will we have anything to talk about it at that on December fourth? At this point, we don't have anything on the table.
We can do training. People don't want to do it outside of.
Yeah, I'm gonna train for the year now.
Didn't want to hear about your experience.
Um, I'll, I'll tell you, um, I may not be available that night, I'm having a new replace the next day. So, oh yeah, it's getting done.
So why don't we just table the, table the meeting? I mean. It's up to you guys, I don't.
We will uh, we will not plan on having it unless something comes up between now and then.
If they, if they give something back to us.
Right, okay.
I don't have anything coming down the pipe, no.
Um, before we end, we have the opportunity for additional public comments, uh, once again. Um, you, it asks that you limit your comments to two minutes and state your name and what capacity you're making in the comments. Are there anybody from the public that?
Bill Hayes and I recommend that he's some of the hay. Floris, the ham and sister right now, so. Thank the board for approving the East project.
Toby Irvin, our settlement road, I would like to um take issue with the chair's announcement about mowing and the conditions there for. DEC's advice with respect to invasives that we are now encountering because of. Various reasons, one of which is climate change, things like Japanese knotweed, purple loose stripe. And the giant parsnip particularly are only approved for mitigation by mowing at the appropriate time of year when they. When they are in bloom before they go to seed because they travel by seed as well as rhizome. So mowing once a year is insufficient. They're in the full seed production right now and those plants are out there saying, mow me down, so put those seeds in the ground. So it's necessary to do that in the spring, mitigate those per DEC. And that's my experience on my farm where I try to keep it out of my hay crop. I live across this road from the DEC land, the wildlife management area. And I have had to literally beat on them to get them to comply with their own regulations regarding mitigation. So please don't make more problems by having more. Invasive, and I know you are very sensitive to that issue because it's farmland. So I disagree with the chair's advice.
But if the, unless those invasives are are already there.
But giving, who's gonna check that? The 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 mowing schedule of twice a year is clean and it works, it does mitigate. So I would ask that that remain in place, but there by someone who looked at that question, I don't know.
I know what the knotweed did, it only, it takes repeated mowing.
Yeah, repeated, so does the.
And twice a year is not enough.
Is there a definite thought on this, Toby? Definite, abstrategic, definite deal?
There is DEC advice. With respect to their management of a so-called wildlife management. There's a lot of problems with it, I agree.
Yeah, I've been working for over ten, uh, for over fifteen years to eliminate um knotweed from my sugar bush property. So I got rid of the knotweed, um, the wild parsnip. And mowing knotweed is.
Oh, yeah, but. Better than having it spread, blow it down.
Except your mower spreads it.
And you touch the mower after you're done, I mean.
The only thing that.
But.
I'm not saying to brown.
The other, the other choice is chemical and I will not use that on my.
Okay, it seemed like the concern was around monarchs, will mowing in the spring are milkweed, would be all right?
If it's early enough. Alternatively, you gotta mow late. So that the monarchs have matured before you mow them. Because they're out, their categories are out there, Mon.
My experience with with the purple loose stripe and the um giant parsnip is that they bloom before the milk, milkweed's of late.
Yeah, it's late.
Late July, summer.
James Road, I'm just wondering if. We can get better at getting the minutes out and the agendas. I, I don't know how you resolve it.
Um, okay, I'm. We're frustrated. And we're working on it.
Feel badly. People ask specifically to have those comments immediately after the meeting. And now they're saying they still haven't seen it, it still hasn't been. Still hasn't been available, the minutes or the comments or from a public hearing, so it's, it's.
Well, I mean. All that staff support, which my committee does not, and we have the same kind of problem, but. Why do, why is your staff not taking minutes tonight and producing the other?
Ian, Ian emailed, and I'm not, Ian emailed myself and the staff for an agenda.
Last week.
Last week. I went to Heidi Friday and said, Heidi, if I don't see anything by the weekend, I'm gonna have to come in Monday and do an agenda and. You're gonna have to give me a Zoom link and. So that's what we did this morning and then. Here I am doing this and she said, she told me she was gonna be here, she told Heidi she wasn't gonna be here, so I just. I.
I put my blinders on because as a chairperson of another committee, appointed committee, I have no secretary and no liaison, I assume you're a liaison, not a board member of the board.
Correct, sir.
That falls then to someone on the committee, a dedicated secretary in the planning board or someone to monitor the paperwork flow or. I don't care, I have, I have a secretary who's willing to do it on the committee. But it would be very helpful to those of us in the community who try to participate. To know what's going on.
Should that be a a function of the town board to fund a position to do exactly?
Standing is the new budget funds you all. You're being given a stipend to appear, you must be given the.
Whoa. Whoa, oh, in the, in the new budget?
Yes. Propor- a public hearing last week and passed it.
You will, you will in twenty twenty-four, it's in the budget.
Toby, we have a secretary, she is paid. So. But to answer what Toby just mentioned, yes. Every bore, every planning board, zoning board I've ever dealt with has never been. Paid. The only board that's been paid is the Board of Assessment Review. Which only meets one time a year. So the town board has, because you people have met. Multiple times in the past year, they finally decided, why not? You know, you're, you're, you know.
Wow, I don't know if my speaker said you either of us had any correspondence.
Well, you know, but the, you know, but the chairman gets X amount, the rest of the board gets X amount, so.
Any alternates getting up?
Oh, no, the alternates get, no.
The dollar or not here, or the rent. Board members will get fifty dollars for each meeting that they attend. And I will get seventy-five as chair. You know how many hours I've spent in the last month working for this board? It's probably at least the equivalent of two entire days.
So are you, are you, you wanna raise?
Don't do it for the money, um, and it's almost. It's not enough to be able to pay for it, and it's like, why buy it? Um, and Mary Ann told, told me that we don't have to accept the money. That we can donate it.
We need a motion on that.
No, no, it's by individual, individuals can opt not to get paid. But that's. I, that's my understanding. Are there any other comments?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kayla. Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, have a good night.
Work, everybody, thank you. Thanks, Bill.